Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Alderman Crowe Kramer. Alderman Collier. Alderman Keenan. Alderman Zalinski. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Benner. Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor has been excused.
Item E is public comments in any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone here who wishes to make a comment this evening? If you would like to, you could step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Tim Goze and I live at 98 Fox Street. And I'd like to comment on the property of 100 Mathewson's or Fox Street, excuse me, with the purchase. While I'm not overly enthusiastic about the trestle trail going right at the end of that street, buying that property and putting the trail through there and the entrance to the bridge in that property would be a great improvement of at the end of the street. It would provide safety for the people coming off the bridge because if it comes right into the street, they'll be coming off the bridge right into the road and my driveway is right there and I'd be backing out of there. And I'm really concerned that if it would go there, that it would be dangerous and somebody might get hit, you know, the way they come off on the bikes. The other thing is, is I seen the preliminary plans that Brian had and it provides some parking. Well, you know, time will tell whether it's enough parking or not, but at least it provides some. So I would encourage everyone, if that's where the trestle trail is going to be, to support and buy that property and use it as part of the trestle trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goze. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Vince Canute, 46 Lawson Street. I oppose the trestle trail straight up. I don't want to look at it. It could go somewhere else. It should be brought... A lot of other things should be taken into consideration as to where it goes, not sticking it anywhere you want. Out front of my house now, I've got a beautiful galvanized tower, kind of industrial, doesn't match one in my backyard that's green. I've been faced with residential hassles by the City of Manassia for as long as I lived there. I'm opposed to the trestle trail. I don't want to look at it down the river. I want to see James Island, not that bike trail. You can put that bike trail anywhere you want it. 5K. I seen before, I had tax troubles and I think I've got them under control. Before that, you had the trestle trail going right in front of my house. You're trying to get my property? I was told years ago, you're trying to get my property and it's starting to look that way. So no to the trestle trail. I just got a parking ticket in my yard. Why hand out parking tickets on somebody's property? I don't know. I'd like my money back and all the hassles and I need this stuff to stop. Just trying to be a good citizen, time to speak up. Can't let you keep going with some of these things. You think you got the right idea, but obviously you don't have it right all the time. All I have to do is look across the river to see that. So thank you and I'm not going to forget about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. First, I just want to welcome the new members of the council. Roll up your sleeves, get ready to work, ask lots of questions. So I have a lot to cover. The first thing I just wanted to mention, item G4 on your agenda, I think you have a typo instead of 84,300. It should read 8,430 or your math won't add up. The thing I'm really here about is item J, the heldover business, the ad hoc protocol committee. Now depending on exactly what the intent is for this, first of all, I'd like to mention that the clerk does have a common council orientation workshop scheduled. I encourage all of you to go, not just the new members. That alone should answer a lot of questions regarding Robert's Rules of Order and protocol and common questions that come up and confusion between certain motions. And I think that's one of the major components because there's confusion on when certain things can be used and when they can't, that we're not throwing out these points of order and, you know, whatever. But my concern is if it's just something to kind of straighten out protocol or improve the current agenda, that's one thing. But if it's any effort to stifle debate or to prevent someone from asking questions or getting the information that they need to make an informed, balanced decision, I'd be adamantly opposed to it. I also question why, as Alderman Zalinski brought up last week, if you're going to do this, it should be the entire council and not just handpicked for members and the mayor. A few examples of which regarding protocol, when this was first established back in 2008, there are two items that really to this day, I think are incorrect in the way the agenda is set. One of them being the consent agenda. And the consent agenda, from everything I've read, from League of Municipalities to other communities, it's for routine procedural decisions that are likely to be non-controversial. It's nothing that is budgetary or something that is going to bring up a lot of questions. Examples of, and this is from League of Municipalities, approval of minutes, final approval of proposals or reports that the board has been dealing with for some time and all members are familiar with, routine matters such as appointments to committees, staff appointments requiring board confirmation, reports provided for information only and correspondence. Now, you do just the opposite. You do separate votes on these kinds of items. These are the kinds of items that could go in a consent agenda. Furthermore, I found an opinion from a former Attorney General of the State of Wisconsin for a different community where the same question was raised regarding the consent agenda when that community is using it. And she did a big, long letter, but basically this was one of her comments. Standard parliamentary authorities generally permit the use of a consent agenda only for the approval of routine and non-controversial items that can be appropriately disposed of by a single vote without detailed individualized consideration. Under Robert's Rule of Order, it's one of the parliamentary procedures 116. This strongly suggests that even if it's technically legal, it is nonetheless poor parliamentary practice to use a consent agenda not only for such routine and non-controversial matters, but also for in-block approval of a body's entire order of business. It also questions whether it applies with the open records law because you are making one vote on several items and the minutes don't reflect that. So I would like to see the consent agenda, if you're going to keep it, which I'm assuming you are because it does save time, that it's restructured to these non-controversial routine orders and not things that are recommended by another committee or passed. I mean, we've had TIF district approvals under the consent agenda. We've had rezoning under the consent agenda because it came through the Plan Commission. You know, so that really needs to be looked at. Another thing regarding the agenda is we've had Aldermen in the past request items be placed on the agenda, only to have those items not. And under League of Municipalities again, great source of information if you ever need to find something out. Wisconsin statutes 19-841B does not vest the presiding officer, meaning the mayor, with the power to set the agenda because the body... The agenda of the body, because the plain meaning of the statute only empowers the presiding officer to describe the agenda, not set it. Another item, a city council or village board may grant some authority of agenda control to the mayor or village president, but may not give such officer discretionary authority to determine the subject matter of a city council agenda because such action would be impermissible delegation of legislative power. And I mean, there's like four or five other state statutes and references to that. And it even... Basically, in your code, it says that any council member or department head can place an item on the agenda. You have a deadline of Tuesday at noon, I think, submit it to the clerk and the clerk sets the agenda. So the mayor shouldn't be removing things or switching things around. I think that's been one of the contentions before because I know a few Aldermen have asked for stuff and then it doesn't show up. A few other things. I would actually... Am I running out of time here?
You're almost double already.
Okay. Could I ask for permission to continue?
Make it quick and we'll let you finish up quick.
Another thing that I questioned was the protocol for the hiring of our new department, our Community Development Director. Now, this should be going through personnel with a recommendation to the mayor and the mayor then can either accept that recommendation or not, but the final decision is with the common council. It's in your code. Peggy had a memo in your previous meeting that a committee was going to be made up. Now, to me, this is an ad hoc committee that wasn't approved with the mayor and department heads and another nearby community, Community Development Director. And it sounds like they're going to be doing the interview process. Now, to me, you're leaving out the council and you're leaving out the public because Community Development Director includes members of the community. I can't tell you how many times I personally contacted Greg Kyle. People want to put up an addition, pave their driveway, add, build a garage. It has to go through Community Development, so it can't be somebody who strictly works with department heads. And in your code, it says the appointment process. The Personnel Committee will interview applicants using the position requirements found. The committee shall then make a recommendation to the mayor, who may or may not make the appointment. In any event, such appointment is subject to confirmation by the common council. Peggy's memo doesn't even mention the common council. I have a memo from 2013 that Pam Captain put together when we were hiring the Administrative Services Director and it goes through a whole list of 11 items and it speaks of the Personnel Committee and prepare the required recruitment materials. Take applications, prepare interview topics, Personnel Committee. Assemble an interview committee to be determined by Personnel Committee. Hold the first interview. Interview committee selection of final candidates. Hold the second interview. Personnel Committee. Personnel Committee recommendation to the mayor. The mayor's selection of final candidate. Common council approval. So we've kind of skipped over that one. Another thing we skipped over is as of tomorrow, the redevelopment authority should be having their orientation meeting again in your own city code. The first Tuesday of May of every year, the RDA needs to get together and there's nothing on the website of any agenda. Actually, a lot of your agendas were off the website today. And I could go on, but obviously I ran out of time. But there are a lot of things. Personally, I think you should be moving your meetings to Tuesdays because I don't know how anyone has the time when you get your packet on a Thursday night to try to get a hold... To review it, try to get a hold of a department head on a Friday and you vote on it on Monday. And the public even has less time. So I would go on, but I can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of department head staff and consultants. Do we have a motion to receive the minutes and communications at this time? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive input on file minutes A through J and Communications K and L.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion is approved. Item G is the consent agenda. There are four items on the agenda this evening. The minutes to approve from the common council meeting of April 19th and the new common council meeting of April 19th. The Plan Commission recommendation of the easement for the trail extension from Oneida Street to province terrace based upon the following findings, that the easement provides sufficient terrace width and that the easement provides sufficient trail width to accommodate trail users. And NINA Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee's recommendation from April 26th for the burn building upgrades or Fisher-Allman construction for the concrete repairs at $2,888, Tri-City Glass and Door, to replace and install the doors for $2,855 and to purchase new burn panels and related equipment from WHP Training Towers for $8,430 for a total cost of $14,173. And as you noted, there was a typo in the 83,000 versus 8,400. Does anyone wish to have any of these items separated this evening? Alderman Benner?
Item number three.
Okay. Any other items? Do we...
Number four.
Okay. Any [inaudible]. No problem. Any others? Seeing none, do we have a motion for the two remaining items?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd make a motion to approve consent agenda items one and two.
There's a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item three is the easement for the trail extension from Oneida Street to province terrace. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda item number three.
So motion and a second. Did we have discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to, with the Kevin Engelberts, he just give everybody an update of exactly what this is and the status of this trail at this point. Not to put you on the spot, right?
That's okay. So this is a trail extension from Oneida Street that will ultimately head northeast into the beginning of Barker Farm Park. From there, we do have trail extensions north up to Midway. This specific easement requires, I think it's either six feet from what would be the Stone Toad for the purposes to construct this trail. This trail was budgeted in TIF District number nine last year and we are setting off to construct the trail extension.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind everybody, this is something we've been trying to do for a very long time and this is a critical piece of trail. It won't totally connect east side to the rest of the Manassia world, but it's going to take a big step from getting the folks. We have some trails that'll be connected to Barker Farms Park and this'll make a big step of getting folks from that part of town and from those trails to get us over to Oneida Street. And this is a pretty critical piece and I'm happy to see this get this far. Thank you.
Alderman Collier?
Another question. I like the trails. I know we're going to have them. I don't see anything for... We'll have kids, we'll have people riding bikes, walking and stuff. It's a long hike. There's no commodes for anybody, stuff like that. How do we figure that in down the road or is it you're on your own?
We... As far as I know, we don't have any restrooms on our trails except for in the parks. So you would have one in Barker Farm Park and that would be the area that we would have the restrooms.
But if we start having 6,000 or 7,000 people running on trails or doing a marathon or stuff like that, would we rent commodes then or would we do something to accommodate?
Yeah, the special event could rent.
Okay.
You see the same thing in the town of Manassia. There are trails on many, many streets and the only restrooms are within the parks.
I was just wondering, did you guys get in contact with Stone Toad? How do they feel about this? I don't want to bash you and hurt in a business and I just want to know what they feel about it.
We have not. I just talked to our staff today and said after the meeting tonight that I would be in contact with them to go over what the need... The reason for the easement and explain to them the process of negotiations for obtaining the easement.
Alderman Spencer?
I would expect any business would be happy to have more traffic come by their business, so I would expect that they probably would be supportive.
I hate to mention this, but Director Radke, would you want to explain why we need a easement at that block and not the rest of the length of the trail?
Yeah, okay. The reason is because when we approach Oneida Street, the Manitowoc Road itself needs to be wider to accommodate all the turn movements. We've been working with DOT. They are going to reconfigure that intersection as part of their resurfacing project in next year. And DOT will also provide the crosswalks, the new crosswalks to accommodate this trail and get the users through the intersection more safely. So in order to allow for that extra pavement width in that segment of Manitowoc Street and to avoid the utility poles that are existing there and to provide enough terrace width for snow storage, we need to push that trail out. And this easement allows us to do that and gives us an extra two feet outside of the trail edge to provide that additional buffer and comfort zone for construction and maintenance of the trail. And it does avoid the existing landscaping that the property owner has north of the trail. So I think it accomplishes all of our goals and is there one that I missed?
The rest of the segment, why we don't need a easement there.
The rest of the segment, we... The existing pavement width of Manitowoc Road is in excess of what is needed, so what we will do on the rest of the project corridor is to relocate the curb and gutter, narrow the street and that will provide... That action will provide us the additional terrace width that is needed to accommodate the trail within the existing street right of way.
Any other questions about the easements? Alderman Spencer?
My wife and I walk and bike down in that area quite often and I think there's a lot of people on the street right now, walking and biking. It's a safety issue in my opinion. If we can get those folks off the street onto the trail, I think we may save some injuries down the road.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item four is the burn building upgrades at NINA Manassia Fire Rescue. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda item number four.
There's a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Alderman Collier?
I agree that we should go forward with this, but I'd also like to get some information in the future for in regards to going out to Fox Valley Tech and training there versus the burn building to see if the numbers are better for us one way or the other. And that's, you know, just a question for down the road so we don't have to pay a lot of maintenance that we might not need because if it's 20,000 now, 15,000, another 40,000 down the road, maybe we have a different view, but we can do this tonight and then go back with the Park and Recs and talk to them in the future about what that stores.
So we did talk about this a little bit at the budget. I don't know if you want to give the short reply, Chief Offshir, and then we can, as we do the budget again for 2017, we could make sure we talk about that again.
Yeah, there are a couple of things. You'll have to refresh my memory if I forget something, but there are... The use of the tech school is not free. They will charge us for supervision and the training facility itself. The main reason for us to maintain ours along with Appleton, Oshkosh, we don't have to be like them, but everybody is going towards their own training center because the logistics of being able to use the crews that we do for burn scenarios and different types of hazardous scenarios or rescues and everything involve two engines and maybe a ladder sometimes. And the way we do it in keeping those units available next to Station 31 allow us to utilize those pieces of equipment to respond in areas while we shift other units, whether it be to the central cities or to the north side of Manassia for 36, to cover 36's area. It allows us that ability. If we send units to the tech school, we'd only be able to send one at a time and that's not as beneficial for us as far as training opportunities and everything else. As for the costs of this, it looks... In doing this, I can't guarantee there's never going to be any upkeep, but if we do the upgrades that we're looking for this year and next year, I would venture to say that we'll get probably 10 to 15 years of that building. I mean, it's been that old. It's been 20 years since it's been built and there hasn't been any upgrades to the facility. We're unfortunate that the tech school didn't do them, but now there are costs. And I do feel that we'd get another 10, 15 years with the changes that we're making this year, next year. And the ability for us to provide different scenarios and training would be more effective also, along with the use of the building. I think that it's something that would be extremely beneficial to still maintain coverage within the cities of NINA and Manassia.
Is there any other discussion? Alderman Keenan?
Chief, doesn't this save us on overtime as well during the training?
We do training on duty. If we did training outside... If we did try to send multiple units outside to the tech school for training, we would have to put some type of unit in service, our reserve unit in service to try to provide proper coverage with as many units as we can. But that would involve overtime as far as that goes also then too. So like I said, the multiple unit training is really the key for us on this and we do that an awful lot. It usually ends up being two sets, two... The same training duplicated twice because we don't want to, you know, just take everyone from all over the city and bring them there. So it takes a morning and afternoon session or either a day and another day training session, depending on how and what training is going to be presented by Assistant Chief Sippin. So we do need, you know, we can rotate. If we have the ability for someone still to respond from that area, we do have the ability to cover the south side of NINA with units from that training site. It may take a little bit longer, but we're used to that and we can do that. That's what we've done for a long time.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call six one.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for April 11th through April 28th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of April 11th, 2016 through April 28th, 2016 in the amount of $1,116,838.33.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Don't hurt yourself.
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 17. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved on the Police Department's memo dated April 27th, 2016.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item three is a Class B liquor license application for the Manassia Athletic Association. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, Alderman Crowe Kramer?
I'll make a motion to approve Class B liquor license application for Manassia Athletic Association to sell fermented malt beverages at Castle Park concession stand.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Did you have a discussion, Will? No? Is there any... Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item J is heldover business. Item J is heldover business. There's a motion to remove from the table the ad hoc protocol committee. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table the ad hoc protocol committee.
There's a motion and a second. This would just be on the motion to remove from the table. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, six one.
There was a motion at the previous meeting, right?
No, they, they, the motion right away that they needed was...
Was table, okay. So, we would need a motion to approve, or something at this point. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the continuation of the ad hoc protocol committee.
Oh, okay. There's a motion and a second to create the ad hoc protocol committee. Now I remember how this was working. We need to actually nominate. This was actually an appointment, so we needed to nominate people. If you wanted to change what I was recommending, you could do that within your motion. Otherwise, if you want to make a nomination including people, or if you want to take, um, take suggestions for the people, or... Alderman Collier?
Seeing that me and Alderman Zelinski are new, and we just got here, I think it'd be fair, instead of going back and forth and voting, just to throw eight names in a hat, pick four out, let those four people go forward. My difference would be, instead of having a mayor on committee, I'd just soon have Pamela Captain on the committee, and just pick four names out of the eight of us and go forward with that and see how we can work that out.
Was there a second to start out with, or not?
The first one was Alderman Benner and then Alderman Keegan said to the protocol.
Okay, so, so would you like to have that be a... Hold on.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to the job.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, I'd like to just kind of get it clear, because we had a protocol committee at one point. And was that a, was that a short-term, one-time thing, or is this a continuation of that? Because I assumed that we already had a protocol committee that formed these things, and I see our attorney shaking her head no. So, I'm assuming that the, that that no longer exists.
So, basically, they were ad hoc committees that existed until the task that they were tasked for was complete.
Okay.
So, that one died at the end of two thousand eight, or whenever that was, once they completed their task.
Okay.
In that case, it was people other than just city council members. I forget who was on the committee that was in here, right?
We had two Aldermen, a police chief, and then a city attorney was on it before.
It, it would make sense to have...
Oh, and the mayor also, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it would make sense to have the people on this board, because you're looking at creating rules for the board. You're not creating rules for the community, so having staff would be rather awkward, having staff tell you how you should run the meetings. I'm okay if you don't want me on the committee. That's fine with me. If you'd rather just have Aldermen, that's perfectly acceptable to me as well.
No, I think, for, for me, I think it's, it's fair that you're there. Also, I agree with Alderman Collier that our attorney should be present, because especially if it involves Roberts Rules of Orders, there's a lot of things associated with that, that she helps bring a lot of clarity to. And also, anything else that, that comes from that. Like one thing, doing a little research, you know, we don't have a code of conduct in it, which is standard protocol, I think, for that. And I'd like to see that put in it, and with that, certainly, I'd like to have, um, city attorney there to aid in that. And I'm, don't know about our police chief or not, if that's necessary or not. Or I think if our attorney was there, I think that's probably sufficient, unless, of course, our police chief has a little soft spot in his heart to be there. He's shaking his head no, and so, I think it, I think it's just more important than... I don't know if the clerk is, is necessary even. I'm not, she's saying no, but she doesn't want any part of it, I'm just seeing, so... But certainly, the attorney, I think the mayor should be there, because you're the chairman of this, of this meeting. And, um, otherwise, possibly chairman from other meetings, from other, like, say, administration committee, or personnel committee, or something, should be on there or something. But I'm open for that. I don't have a lot of emotion over it, other than that we do have fair representation and that the dialogue is, is all positive, so...
So, and whatever this committee would do, it would be brought forward to the entire body.
Oh, absolutely. No, I agree. It'd be approved through a resolution, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I think that's what we did before. And a lot of the changes that we made in the past were really good changes, and like, um, Sandra Dobville Taylor brought up a lot of really good points. I've made notes on things that she had mentioned, and certainly things that I think we should talk about and make sure that we're doing correctly. Because, you know, these changes were made eight years ago. I think there were some very positive changes that made our meetings go better, and I think it's, I think we just have room to do some improvement. And certainly, her comments were, I noted them, and I think are worth talking about yet, so... Those are my thoughts, thank you.
So, Alderman Collier, you could make a motion to amend for what you would like to do? Oops.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, so that we'd be able to go forward with the four people out of the hat, with the attorney, the mayor, and another representative if needed. Would that be right? Six, seven of us?
I think what you wanted to say was choose the four of the hat, and then have the attorney be a non-voting member. Does that make sense?
And if you want to show up, that's okay, too.
Okay, would you like me on the...
I have no problem with that.
Okay, so, four members, I want to have four members randomly drawn, and the mayor and the attorney be a non-voting member.
Thank you.
Okay. So, is there a second for that amendment? There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the amendment? Alderman Benner?
I was just wondering if this included the council president or not? As being a part of the, being part of the committee? Actually, I'm the one who's bringing it forward, and I have some thoughts, and I would certainly like to be on this. Otherwise, I'm going to be in the gallery, and, because I will be there no matter what.
Alderman Spencer?
I was going to suggest that, that the president would be on it, so beat me to the punch.
Okay. Alderman Collier?
I'd like to amend my thing to three people off the floor with the council president.
Okay, so we, we have a motion, an amendment on the floor, so you can't just change it? But we can amend your amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, so there's a second to amend to be three... And the council president. Does that work, to amend that amendment that way, though? Okay. Do we have any objections to just amend it to be three random members and the council president?
I just have a question for clarification. I just want to make sure I understand what, what's being proposed. My understanding is the council president would be on it, and three under, three under other random councilmen. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
As well as the mayor, and the city attorney would be present. Okay, so the motion, the amendment is to create the protocol committee from three random council members, the council president and the mayor, with the city attorney being a non-voting member. So, that's what we're, we're voting on that amendment to Kevin's original motion. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote on that?
Motion carried on roll call, seven zero.
Okay, and now, the motion that's on the floor is to create the committee. Basically, you're voting on the same thing again, but that's how it works. So, could we have a roll call vote on that as well?
Motion carried on roll call, six one.
Okay, so would you like to hold the drawing right now, too, so you know who the lucky three of you are? I see that Debbie has sheets of paper. So, Debbie's going to get a little basket. If you guys would like to write your names on here. Oh, that's right. You can do his, too. Well, Kevin doesn't, Kevin doesn't need one.
That's a good point. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if I'm on a line, if I'm on a line for asking this question, but the chief just brought up a good point to me, is, uh, do we have an option for somebody to deny appointment?
They could decline if they so wish, when the name is drawn.
This wasn't part of the motion, and I just make sure it's clear that you can do that.
And you're not allowed to put someone else's name on your piece of paper.
But the attorney can't deny?
No. So, we should maybe have, should we have Kevin draw the names?
Sure.
Sure. Um, the first person is Alderman Spencer. Next one is Alderman Zelinski. And the other one is Alderman Keegan.
So, are the, are the three of you willing to serve all in a row here? Congratulations to everyone. We'll get together and try to put some times together that would work for everyone. Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Item one is Resolution fourteen. It's a resolution regarding continuing appropriations. Do we have a motion? Not everyone at once, please. Oh, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve R-14-16, the resolution continuing appropriations.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Zelinski?
Could I get some information on this, or what happened there?
So, this is, would you like to... Director Engelbert?
So, so this relates to...
You're not going to get out of that.
A development agreement that was entered between Woodland Developments LLC and the city of Manatia, I think, last fall, early fall. And what it called for was the development of Lake Cottage Estates. And within that agreement was an agreement for a land purchase in the amount of hundred ten thousand dollars. That money was subsequently set aside through a budget amendment for the 2015 budget. What city staff is requesting right now is that those funds be carried over into two thousand and sixteen.
So, basically, this was a project that was anticipated last year that didn't get completed, and it hasn't been completed because we're waiting for a DOT approval for a driveway or a road permit to enter that property. Are there other questions? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, seven zero.
Item two is Resolution fifteen. It's a resolution approving a 2016 debt service budget adjustment. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve Resolution fifteen dash sixteen, a resolution approving a 2016 debt service budget adjustment for the purpose of repaying the 2016 portion of the outstanding WPPI promissory notes.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Zelinski?
I'd just like to know where's the money coming from?
So, this is coming from the debt service reserve fund?
So, how did this get, happen that we just forgot about the seventy thousand dollars?
So, this was a promissory note that was signed as part of the WPPI lease sale back, sale leaseback agreement. I get it the right direction at some point. These were funds that were not able to be put into the total agreement because of the PSC rules. And unfortunately, because of the changes that we changed finance directors at that point, it never got recorded. So, this happened all pre-Peggy, and this is totally on my shoulders that it didn't get hit, and we do need to pay our bills. So, we are looking at adding this to our debt service, taking this out of our debt service reserve fund this year, and then we'll have to put it in the budget in future years. I'm sorry, Alderman Collier?
I also had that same question, and I'll make it short. I feel sorry for Peggy that she had to go through this, but I hope that we can find a way to not let this happen again, because it is an added expense that I didn't foresee, or neither did anybody else.
Again, this happened before Peggy was there. I don't want...
I feel bad for Peggy.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, seven zero.
Item L is appointments. Um, the first item is an appointment of Janelle Dressing to the Committee on Aging, and Janelle is here this evening. She's sat through all this fun stuff. Do we have a motion to approve the appointment? Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the appointment of Janelle Dressing, thirteen oh two Whitman Park Lane, to the Committee on Aging for the term of five one sixteen to two one eighteen.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
反对
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Janelle, and thank you so much for volunteering to help us. Item two is the reappointment of Jason Deon to the Police Commission. Is there a motion? Alderman Keegan?
Move to approve the reappointment of Jason Deon, three ninety-four Walnut Street, to the Police Commission for the term of five one sixteen to five one twenty-one.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
反对
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is the reappointment of Dave Schmidt to the Plan Commission. Do we have a motion? Alderman Keegan?
I'll move to approve the reappointment of Dave Schmidt, seven oh nine Parkview Street, to the Plan Commission for the term of five one sixteen to five one nineteen.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
反对
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from public who wishes to speak? You only have five minutes this time, though.
I know, now I can finish where he left off. Okay. And I'm going to actually talk about what's next on the agenda, is the acquisition of Fox Street. I'm not going to say whether I'm for or against it. I'm just questioning, the way I understand it is the park board wants to acquire and negotiate this property. It did go through the Plan Commission, which it's supposed to by code, but there are no minutes for the last Plan Commission, so the council doesn't know what questions were raised. It would have been nice, because I might have answered some of your questions before going into this. Now, apparently, you're going to possibly go into a closed session to discuss the acquisition. In the memo, it mentioned an assessed value of forty thousand dollars. Well, assessed value is not market value, number one. So, don't assume you're going to get it for forty thousand dollars. There was also a site plan that included a parking lot, picnic benches, picnic tables, signage, a park shelter. That should be discussed. I think that's where some of the friction that has happened in the past has come about, because you're giving authority to negotiate the purchase of a lot. It comes back because the council didn't put a stipulation, can, don't go beyond this point. You know, this is the maximum amount. The board will come back, or the whoever negotiated, and then the council will vote it down, because it's too much. And then there's a little friction starts to build. And then you go back, and then a month later, oh, now we have to pay for all these improvements. Well, we didn't know about that, and then it comes back again. If you just laid it all out at once, we want to acquire this property, we won't pay more than this, all the site improvements are going to cost this much. So, you have a dollar figure, because all of this is going to have to go by a two-thirds vote, because none of it's in the budget, as far as... it's in the budget, as far as, as far as I'm aware. So I think some of these things, we had the same thing happen with the Chute Street, where it was going back and forth, because the department had thought one thing, the common council would get partial information, and it was kind of given, given to them piecemeal. Start to lay out your whole plan, that everybody knows, this is where we started, this is where we're going to end up, and this is how much it's going to cost for the whole project, instead of month after month, having another little piece fed to you. So I suggest, if you go into closed session, you put some stipulations on the park board of how you want this negotiated. And good luck, Brian, because I can't picture Brian being a negotiator.
Thank you.
I just did want to mention that the minutes were in the packet, and that's exactly what we're planning on doing. This, the first part will be an open session, so please stick around to listen to the open session part. The only part that's going to be in closed session is the negotiation up to X dollars for the purchase of the property, if they decide they want to do that, so. Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Vince?
I'm glad I came tonight. So you pretty much kicked that old man off that property. Now it's an empty lot, now it's going to be part of this trestle trail, so you're going ahead with this bridge anyway. You light up the river, I've learned, studying this issue, you light up that river, you're going to have so many riverflies in that area, you won't believe it. People probably won't even want to go across that bridge. Everybody in my neighborhood doesn't, has no idea what's going on with this project, thanks to our Aldermen, that I don't even know who she is, really. I oppose your project. I don't want to see it. I got a boat I drive down the river, I don't want to deal with another bridge.
Thank you. Is there a motion to recess to committee at this point? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd make a motion to recess to committees.